Thank you. We had a motion to come out of executive executive session, madam.
Yes, the trustees in executive session discussed matters related to employment of particular people and collective negotiations. No official action was taken.
Thank you. In continuance with our agenda, we are going to review the consent agenda or vote on the consent agenda. We're then going to take items that were not discussed in the committee of the whole and we'll plug them into the board agenda. Okay, so we need to make a, I need to make a, get a, request a motion, excuse me, to approve the consent agenda items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and nine. We are removing item eight from the consent agenda.
So vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. So just for the record, we discussed the items before you at our committee of the whole meeting. And during my chair report, I'll discuss some changes that will happen after this meeting regarding the committee of the whole. But for timing purposes, I would like to just highlight the items. Actually, because of the changes, I'm going to ask Chair, Board, Vice Chair, Trust, Board, Vice Chair Stone to go over the budget and audit information.
Right. Let me just make sure I I think
I'm sorry if this is a little confusing, but
That's okay. We've got, yeah, there were 12 items. And I've, and I will just go over the mountaintops here, and then we can see if any trustees have additional comments or if anyone from the college would like to supplement. So we've received the foundation's audit, and we had a reasonably robust discussion of that in our committee of the whole meeting. I'm looking at the materials that came from the outside auditor for the foundation. Statement of activity. The summary there was essentially that things are good from an accounting point of view. COVID has affected the fundraising ability of the foundation for the last couple of years. The investment returns have been excellent. And the net effect is that really the investment returns are somewhat masking a diminished amount of fundraising, in large part due to COVID. And with the entrance of Dr. Balkan into our community, with his fundraising background and enthusiasm for this particular area, I know the people at the foundation are excited about working collaboratively with him to examine really from top to bottom what's going on on the fundraising side and hoping to maintain, of course, the good investment returns, but also seeing where within the community we can bolster receipts of monies, whether that be through building naming, events, and the like. So there's very detailed reports on all that, but that was the essence of the conversation we had today about the foundation in light of the report, the auditors of the foundation. Nothing much was happening on the supplier or rentals and waivers side of things. Budget to actual, the two dashboard items. I'm going to leave to a former interim president, Ruder, and new president, Dr. Balkan, to talk about, the materials are all there in familiar form. Enrollment continues to be a significant challenge. We're again kind of masking the situation with an influx of state and federal aid. And in some areas, the picture is brighter in terms of just maintaining a cohesive situation here during the pandemic, but the long-term structural challenges are very, very difficult. And we'll hear more about the specifics of that in items seven and eight of my list. We haven't really covered the health cooperative, the insurance cooperative, but taking a look at that, it looks like it's running generally to the positive. So I just looked for major, you know, negative effects there, and I did not see any. The capital projects, we have a number of things going on, six or eight projects highlighted in green in our material that are just sort of an ongoing maintenance type nature. I think the governor's executive budget did obviously cover the state's fifty and pose the state's 50% coverage of those items. So we're there. And of course, anything involving our capital facilities, you know, ties into the broader discussions we're having community-wide about the college and how we deliver services for our students. And then we had no reports on the disposal petty cash and ASC part of it this month. So those, I think, were the key items. I guess I'll turn it over to Messrs. Ruder and Dr. Balkan to pick up on the budget to actual, in whatever way they wish to do so.
Thanks, Jeff. As far as the budget to actuals, we actually covered it during the retreat. These are the same statements that we reviewed. Just to do sort of a high-level overview that we, without stimulus, to your point, we had a, I think, a $13.3 million deficit for 1920, 9.3 in 2021. And the budget for 2122 has a $12.6 million deficit, meaning spending in excess of revenues if we don't take action. We would have, we have a fund balance that is audited that will be presented next month at the board meeting of approximately $7.6 million surplus. But that is after approximately $27 million of federal stimulus. So we would have a significant situation, not even being able to meet payroll if not for the federal funds. Federal funds end this year, so we need to continue to cut costs, contain costs, reduce costs. And because our enrollment, as was mentioned earlier, continues to decline. As far as your mention about the capital report and the governor's budget, the governor's budget has two new projects in it. These, those two projects are not reflected on this report. These are current active projects that have been previously approved by the county as well as the state in New York. So there's two new projects in 2022 in the governor's budget, one for $1.5 million facility maintenance improvements, and then also a million dollars for a tile roof project here at City Campus. Other than that, if there's any other particular questions, and you did mention LMHF. We are running, I think, a $273,000 surplus. We generated surpluses all last year, and through our good stewardship and our unions and our employees here, we were able to move forward, no increase in health insurance this past year.
Questions? And just, I would just pick up on one thing you said, and that is, I think, generally, the college community is aware, but on February 11th, the Board of Trustees had a very, very helpful and excellent day-long retreat in which we were able to, you know, firmly consult with one another, with Bill Ruder as our interim president outgoing, and with Dr. Balkan coming in. Very, very helpful day. And we went over a lot of, a lot of the broader issues that the report just touched on.
Thank you. Trustee Stone. Thank you, Bill Ruder, for that report. I'm just making sure I am in order. Okay. So right now, we have for, just for board's information, items one through 12, including own budget and audit committee documents, as well as a human resources transaction report, which was both discussed in committee of the whole, as well as items in executive session. Before I move to policy and governance, may I have a update on the strategic planning and assessment? Our new chair, Carrie Phillips, of that committee. But I believe the update is regarding middle states with, and Adia will provide that?
Sure, absolutely. We have a schedule to meet with trustee Phillips, I believe, this, next week, to really talk and dive into the strategic planning and really start that process immediately. With regards to middle state, no update. We are waiting for them to give us feedback on our response. So we'll update the board and the college as soon as we get the respond from the middle state commission entity.
And that's expected in March?
March, April, yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now I would like to go to policy and governance with Chair Masialo.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We did not meet in, the Policy and Governance Committee did not meet in February. Our next meeting is March 2nd at 4:00 PM. It's virtual, so all of you are invited to attend. For your information, are the minutes of the October 13th Policy and Governance Committee. Does anybody have questions about those? And that is my report.
Thank you.
Amy, if I may interrupt just a minute. The, someone mentioned March and April a minute ago, and that put a thought into my head. I heard a report this morning from a panel of Albany insiders who are, you know, relatively plugged in, I think it was on NPR, who were talking about the likelihood of the governor's budget process resulting in a timely budget on or about April 1st with no major amendments. And the consensus of this group, which was a pretty informed group, was that given that it's an election year and the state's relatively healthy fiscal situation in light of the federal help, that they expected the budget process to be unusually smooth and timely this year. You never, you're always knocking on wood when you make a prediction like that. But this was the consensus of some people who have been close to the process for many years. And they just tried to read the tea leaves and how it all looks. And, you know, the governor's relatively powerful position, having just been renominated by the Democrats with a pretty strong weighted vote percentage. So it all looks, you know, in terms of what's in the budget, I would say the arrow points to more likely that those items will survive or be supplemented than that they would be reduced and that the budget will probably be timely or close to timely.
Thank you. Are there any questions before we move forward? Comments? All right. So next we'll have, I know trustee Holymay have to leave for class soon, and we never want to make him late for class. One more item for approval within my report, so I'll just move on to my report. But before we do anything, before I report out anything else, can we look at the SUNY Erie Board of Trustees' schedule of meetings? Because that has to be approved. I would say that I am in favor of the meeting dates, except for one discussed at our retreat. And Kelly, I apologize, you did not know this. We decided to hold our annual retreat in February of 2023. Oh, wait, these are 2022 dates.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought we were, I thought we were looking for, okay, then never mind. The only thing, as you recall, you may recall, August, we said no meetings because that's normally when people take vacation time and staff is ramping up to start the new semester. And I thought we said for July as well, but I'm not sure. We could, I'm in favor of the agenda, of the calendar as presented.
The only exception may be, at the very bottom, there is a reference to a Board of Trustees' retreat on Friday, September 9th, 2022. And I think the consensus was, we prefer to do that in February, right, of 2020?
Right, that's what I was, that's, okay, that's what I was talking about. I did, okay, so I'm not going crazy. Kelly, yes, we did, we did say instead of the September board retreat, and for information, we normally hold our retreat in September. But since we had it in February of this, of this past February, we wanted to make it a full year before the next retreat. So the next retreat will be held at a date in February to be determined. So I am in favor of approving this calendar pending the amendment to the Board of Trustees' retreat.
I'll move that, or second it.
Thank you, Kate and Jeff. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so with that being said, we will have a, well, excuse me, the agenda, the calendar is approved pending the changes. Please look for a doodle call where we're trying to coordinate the dates in February of 2023.
Reorder.
Okay. So in regards to my, my update, I just want to just piggyback a little bit off of what Jeff said. We have a full day of both presentations and conversations with senior executive staff, Dr. Balkan, Bill Ruder, and Adia, Dr. Sagai, regarding just the current and future issues of SUNY Erie. And we, I feel like we came out of that all on the same accord, knowing a direction where we are going. We are going, we are, we talked heavily about the strategic planning and beginning the next phase of the strategic planning process, which will be reliant on the work that was done through middle states. And as Dr. Sagai mentioned, she, Carrie, trustee Phillips, will be heading that, that committee and will begin the process. There will be staff that will be needed to be at the table as well. But we are excited to undergo this process and creating our new strategic plan for this year. There are, there are a lot of other things that we know are currently on the table, some exciting initiatives that may be happening at North Campus thanks to the groundwork that Bill Ruder has laid with our stakeholders in Amherst and also our business community, including our foundation or Chair Mike Gallopso, and also Chris, I don't want to leave you out, but definitely. Thank you for that. We had great discussion, very, very optimistic on the projection of SUNY Erie. However, we do know we are still looking at many challenges that we have to face in order for us to get to that next level. But I believe that we left the retreat knowing that all of us had to, as far as trustees, had to roll up our sleeves, put on our mud boots, and get ready to get, you know, dirty as we just, you know, pursue doing the work to make, ensuring that our students are at an institution of excellence. Regarding the committee of the whole meeting, we, we, the board decided that the committee of the, certain committees would need more attention and more time. That's not really allowed, allotted during the committee of the whole prior to the board meeting. So these committees, as previous to committee of the whole, will be standalone committees headed by Chair, excuse me, certain individuals from the board to chair the committees. These committees are, I have my list, will be curriculum, student success, and diversity, budget and audit, talent management, strategic planning and assessment, technology and marketing. Each chairperson will work with the designated staff to determine the time and date for these individual meetings. We are not trying to add more work to anyone, but we do know that some of these items require more time and attention. They may not meet monthly, they may meet every other month or every quarter, but making sure that we have, and the board has a complete understanding of what's happening within the college in line with our middle state obligations, as well as our OSC audit obligations. Are there any questions regarding that report? I know we've had a lot of activity since our last meeting with our president coming in, Dr. Balkan, with our vice provost being officially the vice provost, the vice provost, or the provost of our college, and with Bill Ruder so graciously saying, "I'll hang on a little while longer with you guys to help you with the tradition, transition." So we just continue to move along, and I think that's it for my report. If I missed anything, feel free to use the dots. As far as, so we approve that. Student trustee report, Travis?
Thank you, Sherwin Wilson. We're actually on spring, well, one of our spring breaks this week, so I do not have to go to class. Yeah, I know we look forward to the breaks in the spring semester, so get caught up on work. As far as the report, you know, I will say, I do want to take a moment to recognize Dr. Balkan and Dr. Adia Sagai for their involvement with the SGA and transparency and helping us get more of those student issues to the administrative level. I know Dr. Sagai has been working with the SGA presidents and self with setting up more meetings to be able to address student concerns. So I just wanted to take that moment to say thank you. As far as the SGA, the SGA has been busy with the beginning of the semester with different events last month with Black History Month. We did have a few speaker events, one with Trini Ross, she is the first African-American U.S. attorney for Western New York at North Campus. And from the report from North Campus, that was a good event. There was multiple students that showed up, and we're excited to have more of those types of events. As far as anything else significant for the board, I don't have anything new since our retreat that was two weeks ago. So I don't know if there's any questions from anyone on the board or anyone in attendance that would have from the student perspective.
Thank you, Travis, and you guys don't know, but we, we had to request that Travis stay on as a student trustee. His schedule changed, and according to bylaws, he, we almost lost him. We did not want that to happen. So I am glad to see him here this meeting and going forward. So thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Before we go to the College Senate report, I just want to make sure that I look at the, I don't skip over the Technology and Marketing Committee. Technology chaired by trustee Phillips and marketing by trustee Lenahan. If you have anything to report?
So for technology, we did not meet yet this month. We're meeting in a week and a half. So we will have that meeting and an update at the next meeting.
Okay.
In terms of marketing, I think we're in the process of reconfiguring how our marketing is going to work. I think, you know, we've had some changes. So what I'm saying right now is that we've worked with all and others to sort of reimagine this marketing committee. It just doesn't seem to have a clear role at this point. I guess what I'm saying is, we're in the process of revising and reconfiguring and hopefully coming up with an approach that'll work for everybody.
Sounds great, man. I think that this is the time, right, for us to look at everything and see what works and what doesn't work, and how can we make things better? So I think that's, this is a great time to do that. Thank you. I'm back onto our board agenda. The College Senate report?
Colleen Quinn is not available, so there will be no Senate report. Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. I do know we have a meeting coming up soon with Colleen, and so we may have something to report on there. Next, we'll have the report of the president.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What we'd like to do is start, I think, with information regarding our COVID environment?
Yes, Amy and Mark are just going to give brief updates as far as SUNY, the county, masking, vaccination, just so everyone's that's watching this is fully aware. So I'm not sure, Amy or Mark, who's kicking it off?
I can start. Good morning, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. Just to kind of give an update, we are in, we had a rough month in terms of January from a positivity standpoint, which mirrored exactly what we were seeing from the county, as well as the state, as well as across the country. I'm happy to report that that positivity rate is now at zero on our campuses, which is extraordinary and has been great. We are now in full compliance mode in terms of getting more of our students boosted, especially those that are eligible. So we've been doing lots of outreach campaigns through texting, phone calls, contacting them to get classes, to get students to get boosted and get that information into the college. Our numbers are good. They're going up. I'm confident that we're going to get there, which is great. From a staff perspective, we are at a 90% vaccination rate for our staff, which is excellent. We are also encouraging our staff to get boosted as well and pushing that information out to them so that they can provide information to us so that we can update numbers to SUNY. As far as masking goes, there has been a lot of changes, but at this point in time, we are still requiring masks on all of our campuses, regardless of vaccination status, that will be looked at over the next few weeks based on some of the information the county executive has released in terms of changes to county buildings and the masking requirements, as well as some guidance that we just recently received from SUNY. So there will be new information out, like everything else with COVID. It's a fluid situation. It may change in the future, but we will keep the campus and everyone informed. I'll pass it over to Mark for information from the county.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to echo what Amy said. We are in a very good place at this moment. The county still has a vaccine pod for second shots and boosters operating in our south campus, Building 7, open on Mondays from noon till 4:00. As Amy said, the mandate remains in place. I did have a discussion with the Health Department two evenings ago. There is the possibility of that being changed, but it's going to be a week or two, and it's going to be based on metrics. Something that came out of the SUNY meeting is that surveillance testing will be in place going forward and may also be in place in the fall. Any questions? Thank you.
I'd like to just make one comment on this. You know, as we're moving forward and, you know, with the prospect of the mask policy or the mask mandate changing, one thing that we're going to really double down on is ensuring that our students, staff, and faculty recognize that it's a fluid situation and that just because, you know, we're able potentially to remove the mask mandate, it doesn't mean that it's permanently removed. Because ultimately, I think one of the challenges that everybody faces is properly setting expectations. And, you know, I think, you know, moving forward, what we're going to have to do is figure out how to be able to keep our students, staff, and faculty well-apprised of the environment such that they know what it means to be in compliance on any given day. So it's going to be a challenging environment if we do decide to get to the point where we're saying, you know, masks are optional, especially recognizing that, you know, there are more strains on the horizon, you know. This is not going to end, you know, abruptly. Everything suggests that, you know, we're going to have to stay vigilant and just be cognizant of the fact that for people who are really concerned, ultimately, we may want to strongly recommend that they wear KN95 masks or get fitted with N95 masks. Because again, that's the only way of being able to assure people that they have protection, especially if the mandate is relaxed. The next component that we wanted to touch on was the enrollment. And I don't know if, Bob, you have numbers you can throw up on the screen for us, please? But if you look at this, again, these are point-in-time totals, and you'll see that the variation from 2021 for our head count is down 1.14%, which reflects a total decrease which reflects a total decrease from 2020 of minus 21.54%. So clearly, the COVID environment has, has, uh, you know, wreaked havoc with, with our headcount, as it has with our full-time equivalents. Again, we're there, that point in time, we're down 5.9%. And again, variation point in time from 2020 is down minus 25.64%. Um, one of the key things that I want to highlight here and I, I might, you know, ask Bill to help, uh, refine my comments on, uh, revolves around our budget. So, we were anticipating 8,153 students. So, clearly, point in time, um, we're about 400-plus students behind that. However, um, for some reason, we're showing that we're pretty much on, on target for the full-time equivalent budget of 2542.4. Uh, and, and I should be clear, um, you know, I do recognize that this is point in time and it's possible that some of the changes are reflective of the fact that not all the advanced studies have been baked into these numbers yet for the, for the 7737. Any, any comment, Bill?
No, you, uh, hit it right on the head. It's advanced studies, we'll move the, uh, headcount numbers and we should be very close to budget on both the headcount and FTE. And then we'll have a, uh, firm sense at the end of drop ad where we stand. But from a budget perspective, good, but I think the highlight with Dr. Balkin said, we can't like celebrate that we hit budget when we're down 21, 25% from two years ago. It's, it's not a cause for celebration.
Additionally, if you go further down on that sheet, the, the third block of numbers, current versus final comp, um, final comparison, again, the spring 2021 numbers.
I'll call you, I'll call you in about an hour.
Thank you. So, the spring 2021 number of 8,239 was, uh, taken on three, on March 22nd. So, um, that 7,737 again is our current number and we're going to be freezing for comparison's sake, um, what the number looks like on March 21st. So, you know, we'll have hopefully a, a closer, um, a, a better number on March 21st. And we do anticipate, uh, at least another few hundred, a couple of hundred, uh, advanced studies being added to the mix. So, if, uh, are, are there any questions with that? One thing I also wanted to add is that, uh, you know, we are very much focused on trying to figure out how to quickly grow our enrollment numbers. And, you know, to fully comprehend from an FTE perspective, exactly what our micro credentialed and badging strategy will represent. Currently, these numbers do not reflect any non-credit. It's strictly for credit. Um, other community colleges throughout the country do include non-credit because it's revenue-bearing and it's significant when you're looking at the overall cost effectiveness of the college. Um, so that's something that, you know, I might look at providing as an aside so you're having a better appreciation for the impact that our college is having, um, in the community. Any questions about that?
That also speaks to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but how we count completions, correct? Because a, a student who started with us and probably transferred over but didn't receive their, uh, full degree is considered a non-complete with us, even though they may have went somewhere else. Is that correct? Am I saying that?
Yes, and unless they've completed 15 credit hours and we can give them reverse credit for completing, you know, 60 plus at the, at their new location. So, for example, if they transfer to the University of Buffalo after having completed 15 credit hours with us, we have the potential of being able to claim a completion once they complete 60 credits of in-program, um, coursework.
Okay, so, I mean, I, the, the, the number is devastating, of course, the 21%, the 20, you know, um, as far as our enrollment decline. I know you and, and the team are working on ways to increase enrollment. But I'm also wondering about retention numbers. If we can start getting retention numbers, um, in, in the future, add it to this list, that would be so helpful.
Yep, so definitely, I mean, to your point, the retention is candidly almost more critical because if we're losing a significant portion of students before they complete, say, one semester, uh, obviously, we have to figure out how best to enable them to be successful. Uh, the challenge, again, oftentimes, especially those that are on financial aid, should they be on financial aid, is if they drop out after the drop window, uh, oftentimes, they incur a, a student debt that effectively precludes them from ever coming back because they'd have to pay that before they're allowed to, to rejoin our, our campus. So, this is something that we're very sensitive to and, you know, are very focused on. Um, we're going to be starting interviews, I believe, uh, in the next couple of weeks for our vice president of enrollment. Um, I'm confident that we'll be able to find a strong candidate who's intimate with what the challenges are. And frankly, um, I'm very interested in having that vice president of enrollment also be, um, somewhat responsible, if not fully responsible, for retention numbers, recognizing that re-enrollment is a core, uh, metric for our overall success.
Thank you.
So, that's all that I have, uh, today to present. Uh, I will tell you that in addition to the micro credentials, um, you know, we are very interested in developing relationships with community partners, organizations and companies. Uh, we've already laid some groundwork and have initiated some, some discussions and we're cautiously optimistic that in the next couple of months, we'll be able to announce some significant initiatives that will help us grow certain programs that are high-demand, um, high-wage, um, career paths.
Absolutely. Um, I just wanted to also, um, mention for my other trustees who may not know, Dr. Balkin's calendar has been extremely full as he's been meeting, uh, our community stakeholders, uh, both, um, and our, our elected officials, our business, uh, professionals, our workforce professionals, our, uh, internal stakeholders, our staff and, and, um, um, chairs and deans and what have you. He's been, um, really busy and already has started working weekends, um, on his, 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 uh, in his first 30 days. And it, it really has almost been 30 days.
Yeah, I, I also wanted to share, you know, when you talk about meeting with different parties, um, I've also had the opportunity to meet with the president of Buff State and, uh, we've talked about various models of collaboration that might include us offering one plus two plus one programs with them, which are akin to what we do with Damon for nursing. So, again, not, they don't have nursing, but it does kind of open the aperture to say that we might be able to collaborate and support each other in getting what might be effectively dual enrollment with Buff State. I'm scheduled to have a meeting next week with the president of the University of Buffalo and one of the key things that we are really interested in better understanding is if there's an opportunity for us to catch students who stop out from the four-year SUNY systems and be able to enable them to get a fresh start at, um, SUNY Erie and then ultimately, after demonstrating success, transfer back to their original four-year college choice.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, okay, so with that being said, I completely skipped over the presentation of our workforce development and planning by Katie Marshall and I am not going to say I remembered it. I just got a text message from Kelly telling me I forgot. So, thank you, Kelly. Um, with that being said, may we have the presentation, Katie?
Sure. Um, before Katie start, Chair, um, Madam Woman, let me just kind of put this in perspective. Um, Katie Marshall has been great in leading, um, the effort, uh, for our workforce division of the college, uh, really for the last, uh, few months, uh, really assessing the status of the workforce division of our college, uh, rebuilding, uh, relationship that we, we missed on, um, and didn't follow through. And then really, and you'll see in her presentation, uh, reimagining of what, uh, our workforce division of the college will look like in the future with everything that we've been talking about, uh, this morning. So, I will let, uh, Katie Marshall, uh, lead the, uh, the discussion and the presentation she have.
Thanks, Dr. Sagai.
You're welcome.
Uh, would you mind pulling up the PowerPoint? Okay, um, so, the first slide here, uh, I'm not going to get too into detail right on this slide about all these different aspects of workforce development, but I just wanted to give you kind of a high-level overview of what we're talking about when we say workforce development. Um, there's a lot of confusion sometimes about what workforce development is and isn't. Uh, at a very grand scale, everything we're doing really at SUNY Erie is, in some sense, workforce development. Um, but today I'm going to talk mostly about our workforce development department at the college. Next slide, Bob. So, we have three main entry points into workforce development. The first one is corporate training. And when we talk about corporate training, we're talking about customized non-credit training usually for businesses who are looking to upscale their current employees. Okay, so they have a population, they need a, any sort of training you can imagine and they come to the college for that training. In some cases, that includes apprenticeships, which I'm going to talk about in a moment. Um, and one of the reasons that they like to come to us, besides the fact that we're a training provider, is the fact that we might be eligible for grant funding for them. The second entry point of workforce development into the college is continuing and/or community education. These tend to be short, non-credit trainings or certification for our community members. So, this is where you might see one-off people coming to the college for that short-term training or you might see nonprofits coming to us saying, "We have community members, they need training, what can you provide?" Sometimes, um, those are, uh, skill-specific trainings like, uh, we have a electrician helper training, a solar training, and sometimes it's certification or recertification, like infection control or New York State child abuse. Um, and we do have an online ed-to-go offering of, these are online trainings that we, we connect with an outside provider. Um, and we don't do too much with that, so I'm not going to go into that too much today. Um, and then third, I'd like to talk about apprenticeship. So, apprenticeship happens at the college, both within the workforce development department. We partner with businesses by providing on-the-job training for their employees through New York State-registered apprenticeships. And we have a few of those going, which I'll talk about on the next slide. And then we also have some non-registered apprenticeships at the college and those are really embedded in academic departments in the college. So, those don't always necessarily come through the workforce development department. And again, those are, um, the New York State-registered apprenticeships are eligible for SUNY funding. Okay, Bob, next slide, please. Okay, so, I wanted to touch briefly on what we're doing right now and I just want to mention that workforce development at the college, the department, has a very long history. Um, at one point, it was a really robust department and things have changed over time. We've had people retire. Um, so, just keep in mind that this is what might be what's happening, but we have a lot of potential to build, um, and to pick up where we left off. So, corporate training and apprenticeships, we have one going with Xylem, Unifrax and Buffalo Sewer. For continuing and community ed, we have a rather large driving program department, an electrician helper and solar training, as I mentioned before, infection-controlled child abuse and a Sakura construction skills training. So, that's what's actually happening. What we're working on right now under this work in progress column, we have apprenticeships, corporate training opportunities. Um, businesses are reaching out to us. A lot of them are businesses we've worked with before and they're like, "Hey, let's get this going again." Um, we've had several organizations reach out because they want to partner with us for grant funding to have SUNY Erie be a training provider, um, under the EDA Good Jobs Challenge. Um, and then continuing ed, we are looking at starting several non-credit training programs, welding, CNA, and we have a few that have kind of gotten rolling a little bit, uh, Facebook Digital Marketing, Full Stack and a Sun Spec Alliance, uh, cybersecurity program. And we have a lot of potential nonprofits, again, but local organizations reaching out to us, um, Open Buffalo, Western New York Women's Foundation. We have Pathstone Grant Funding, Tech Buffalo, and they're saying, "How can we partner with your college? What can we do?" And then the last column here is just a, kind of a recent historic snapshot. These are, um, just some companies, not, it's not an exclusive list, but some companies we've partnered with, um, to provide training. All right, Bob, next slide, please. So, what we really need to focus on now is looking forward. As I said before, we have a lot of potential. Um, before we kind of jump in, we need to figure out what relations, relationships we have that we're working and how can we get those going again. Um, again, we had some retirements and things fell through the cracks. So, kind of rebuilding that is going to be essential. Um, we should be building a business response team where we get kind of the key players at the college to respond to businesses collaboratively, right? So, we're not sending businesses all over the place. Um, career services, applied learning, the foundation, academic departments, to have that kind of a rapid response team. So, when a business comes to us and says, "We want to partner with your school," we're ready. We have everything organized and we can tell them the opportunities we have. Um, we absolutely have to be incorporating business feedback and industry data in our decisions. So, it can be tempting. I can guarantee you, everybody, well, actually, since I started doing this a few months ago, I can't tell you the amount of people who've come into my office and been like, "I've got an idea." Everybody has an idea or a business that they collaborate with or want to work with, but we have to be really intentional about the programs that we decide to, to do and the businesses that we want to work with. Otherwise, you know, we, we can't be everything to everybody, so we have to be intentional about that. Um, and then we need to get a handle on the grant funding opportunities that are available for businesses. Um, that's, that's in the corporate training side. So, on the continuing and community ed side, we need to do more research into Western New York industry needs and we need to make sure that when we make these data-driven decisions about the programs we want to offer, that we're considering that they lead to sustainable wage careers. Okay, so we, again, sometimes there's great opportunities to partner with businesses, but they lead to really minimum wage jobs, right? And we need to make sure that we're, um, that our community members are getting into sustainable careers. Um, Dr. Balkin spoke to this, but growing micro credentials and badging opportunities is going to be a huge area of opportunity. Uh, grant opportunities, again, nonprofit partnerships, making sure that we're supporting diverse populations and by that I mean putting the infrastructure in so that when we do have community members coming through workforce, we are there to support them with their needs. Right now, workforce development is really separate from the college in the sense that, uh, people who come through don't necessarily have access to bus passes, transportation, childcare, um, in the same way that our credit-bearing students do. Um, and then for apprenticeships, we're working on this now, but we need to get a process guide for how apprenticeships are handled at the college. We need to grow those opportunities. It's a, there's a lot of potential there. Um, and we need to capture the data of what, uh, non-New York State-registered apprenticeships are happening. Um, and I'm actually, uh, going to hand this over to Dr. Sagai to talk about the micro credentials.
Great, and, and that, we, we've been talking about the micro credential. I think the key here is that we are really working, again, intentionally about the credit and non-credit side of the house and how do we develop micro credential? We have a process in place for the college to make sure that it makes sense, it's industry-driven, it's data-driven and we're not repeating efforts in, in two of the, the division of our, of our college. So, we are very systematic about this. I think the other piece that, uh, is important to point out, Katie has been doing a great job of working with, with our faculty internally as well as, uh, externally with our partners and business to make sure that we are really working together to move in the same direction. So, again, same thing in terms of the micro credential. We have a process for both the credit and non-credit side and we are very deliberate about what we want to offer on the, um, work, um, workforce, uh, division side of the house. Next slide.
Um, and I just wanted to mention this as a strength that the college has. This is not an exclusive list again, um, but we have strong relationships with SUNY administration. Um, SUNY admin has two apprenticeship leaders, um, Mohawk Valley and Schenectady, um, and they're our go-to if we want to start an apprenticeship or if a business comes to. our go-to if we want to start an apprenticeship, or if a business comes to us, they're going to be leading us through that process and connecting us with grant funding. MACNE, the Department of Labor, you can see everything that I have listed here. Invest Buffalo Niagara has been really great with providing us with data. If we say, what, just went to them and said, can you give me data about welding? Who's hiring? How many people are they hiring? What skills are needed? And they were able to give us that data. So that, that's been very helpful. Of course, the Foundation, and I should of course mention the academic side of the house, we have our faculty experts who are always happy to work with us. Next slide, please. Okay, so focusing on next steps, I put staffing first because that's an area that, I know, I know it's a challenge, but it's something that we need to address. We need to make sure that before we, you know, go and kind of have all these conversations with businesses and organizations that we're able to follow through. So we need to have that support in place. The data, as I mentioned before, needs to be driving our strategic plan. We need to have that infrastructure there, and I wanted to mention, you know, the vaccine thing is a challenge. If we have businesses or community members that we want to bring to campus, SUNY is requiring them to be vaccinated, even if they're on the workforce development non-credit side of the house. So just a little complication. We need to engage our businesses and our nonprofit organizations. Branding and marketing, you know, I wanted to start today off by talking about what workforce development is because it's confusing, and because everybody else, everybody has a different idea of what it is. So we need to figure out how to make it clear to our community members what we offer, and we need to make those access or entry points easy. And our marketing department has already started to work with me on that, and they have some, some great ideas. And then, of course, we need to work on assessment and continuous improvement. You know, we need to balance being responsive, not necessarily reinventing the wheel, but being innovative. And industries change, sectors change quickly, so we need to stay on top of that. All right, audio, I'll hand it over to you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Dr. Balkan.
No. I just wanted to thank you, Katie, and also highlight, this is an area of strategic investment for us. You know, as we step back and try to figure out how best to get the greatest return on our investment, this is one area that I think we've got to focus on. Right now, Katie alluded to the fact that we've had retirements and people, you know, depart, resign from the, from the college. It needs to be shored up significantly. So, you know, as we kind of move throughout the next couple of months, you'll be hearing more about our initiatives and efforts to ideally get funding to help shore up this space so that we have the ability to, again, offer work-based learning initiatives more broadly.
And this will...
Sorry, just given that the governor and SUNY are really pushing micro-credentials and badges, have they come up with any money for it, or is it just an unfunded mandate?
So there's a lot in terms of, not from the government, but from the governor, but from the SUNY's level, there's a lot of effort on doing the micro-credential, particularly focusing on students of color, adult learners. So there's a lot of funding and grant that actually our college is participating with, specifically to get those individuals to be either on micro-credential, either on the credit side or non-credit side. So there's a lot from SUNY, but I'm not sure about the governor yet.
I'm talking about, are they giving us money for the staffing? As Katie pointed out, that's the first thing we have to look at. So is that money able to be used to get the staffing? We need to take over and, you know, really push this program, because this is a community college effort. I mean, the four years aren't going to be doing anything with micro-credentials and...
Well, actually, University of Buffalo does a lot with micro-credentials.
Oh, I didn't know.
And they're the leader in our region. You know, our interest is obviously in enabling other things that complement what SUNY Buffalo's doing. And to that point, I think one of the challenges that we're going to have to address is the resource, but primarily from a micro-credential perspective, the expectation is that as enrollment declines, existing faculty and staff will be repurposed to enable curriculum and to, you know, deliver this type of offering.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I know we have a lot of work to do, but I am, I feel, I'm glad that we are shining a light on this right now, on workforce. This has been an area that has come up many times during our board meeting and making sure that the college is aligned with our current workforce, workforce initiatives. So thank you both. Okay. So with that being said, are we currently at old business? Is there any old business? Hearing none? Any new business? Hearing none? We held executive session in the early part of the meeting. The schedule of the next, of next month's meeting is March 31st, 2022. Again, you'll be notified of the committee meetings via polls and such. Dr. Segai, I'd like to work with you a little bit on who you think should be in these, these subcommittee meetings. With that being said, okay, I'm sorry, I just want to add the next meeting of the Board of Trustees is in person at 9:00 AM at North Campus, Boardroom. So please mark your calendars for that. And, all right, so may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? This meeting is adjourned at 11:55 AM. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a great day.
Have a great day. Thanks so much.